Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Rauchser.
Here.
Mrs. Mailey.
Here.
Mrs. Herman. Mr. Emig.
Here.
Mr. Eifer.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Brenton. Seven members are present.
Thank you. First up on our presentations, we have our monthly update from Mr. Stefanovic from the township.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good seeing yous for a little while, due to weather, I guess, and everything. I did bring a small handout along. Yes, I do have enough copies if you wouldn't mind taking one and pass around. In the past, I had given a quick update on permits and that, just to keep you aware of what's going on in the area. And even though the winter is a little bit slower, it's still been quite active. In December, we still did two major dwellings, which would be homes or businesses. November, we did seven. And in January, there were three single-family, three apartment buildings, a total of 34 units at Terra Vista, and a major addition to the Belmark industry that's out on Canal. One thing that's of interest to me, anyway, a little bit, that you might be interested also, in total, in the three months, we've done 14 permits for solar arrays on people's homes. That's something that has been growing, and that's sort of interesting as far as people are trying to, I assume they're trying to get away from the costs of the electric companies or whatever, but that's one that's been coming at us a little bit. We did have our zoning officer, Georgia Sprinkle, retire in January, and if you didn't know Georgia, if you wanted to go over and see her now, you can't, she's not there, you'll have to do otherwise, no. And her replacement is John McLucus. He's an individual from the Spring Grove area, and John's working hard to get up to speed, and I know he'll help anybody if they need assistance, even if he can't find the answer or have the answer, he will find it for you, I'm sure. Our senior center is still happening slowly. I know they are working on the contracts, and there's been a few little stumbling blocks, and I don't know for sure if it's that important right now, but I wanted to let you know, as far as I know, it is still proceeding. They're working on all the fine print, I guess. Our township building is in use. We probably are having the same issues that you are with your building, in that there's more mud than there is blacktop, that's for sure. They have been able to get into all of our work areas for the building, and I know the people really appreciated it with the bad weather we've been having lately. They can keep their equipment ready to go because they have enough space now. So, we are planning to have an open house in April or May at the building, so we'll keep everybody apprised of that. In the handout I gave you there, there's a, the first page, I believe, is the floodplain restoration, oh, no, that's, I'm sorry, is our floodplain restoration for the Eagleview We did receive a grant for that, for a million and a half dollars early in the year, and so that is going to be proceeding pretty heavily this year. We are working on fixing the sewer lines in that same area, and then moving into the work with the grant. That is not actually building Eagle Park itself, but it is the first major step to put us in a position so that we can then do the park itself. So, there'll be some construction and other things happening over there behind the current high school this spring. Now, in that little handout, then, there's a county hazard mitigation plan that's out there, and we have to have our own hazard mitigation plan, and I copied the one page for you if you're interested. This has to do with emergency management, which we do on a monthly basis, and there are some meetings to make sure that we're up to date and we have everything lined up for that. If we don't have a hazard mitigation plan, we cannot qualify for some of the assistance or grants or whatever that could happen in those cases. So, as opposed to doing our own plan, we did a quick review and adopted the plan from the county. So, that happened in January for the township, and I guess in one way, we hope we don't ever have to use it this year, but if we do, it'll be there. There are some other little benefits in participating in that program that don't have to do with emergencies itself, but, and so I copied that page just to give you a little idea if you're wondering what that's about. The next page, it has a little heading there. We had a presentation from our solicitor, attack of the mini-cell towers, and how to protect your municipality with, see if I get this right, I was in computers for a long time, but these stuff, this stuff is changing. The 4G that we're all used to, I think, is four gigabyte, and now this 5G is coming at us. The downside of the 5G is the repeaters necessary to make it function are extremely close together. They cannot have repeaters three and four, five miles apart. I think they are more like 500, 600 feet apart. So, in the 4G world, and especially in this 5G world coming, that's coming at us, unless they come up with some different technology, they're going to want cell devices at a lot of places in our township. So, we're trying to learn about it. We really don't have any ordinances right now to stop it. If part of your front yard is a public right-of-way, okay, as of prior, anyway, they could just come and put a pole in your front yard and put one of these devices up. They are allowed to do that by the state, by the PUC. So, we are quickly, the second page of that is the first page of a planned ordinance that we're reviewing right now, and it just gives you a little idea. We want to accommodate all of the wireless communications facilities, of course, because we want Internet to grow in our area, and we want cell to grow in our area, but we don't want repeaters in every other yard of the public running down the roads. They do have the right also to put them on telephone poles, so I'm sure the electric company just loves that, too, and they have their regulations. We do have quite a few on our water towers right now. The water towers are used for both television and for cell usage. So, this is something that we're trying to get our hands on here pretty quick. We are having another session to review and update on this next Monday night, so that we can keep moving and get an ordinance out there that protects us all but yet allows us to grow. The next item I have on is our joint comprehensive plan. We had a public kickoff meeting. There's been a lot of meetings over the past three months on this, but we did have a public kickoff meeting last week, and the group that's doing our plan was ecstatic. We had 75-plus people there. They said there's many times they have a public kickoff meeting with four, five, six people there. So, we did have a lot of input. There was a business meeting held right here in this room earlier this week. The same group came, and we might have had two dozen people there from the business world, and we did a small part of what they do in that big group, trying to identify the strengths and the weaknesses of our area, and so that we can build a plan on that. I would ask, or I appreciate, I don't know who all was involved with publicizing this, but it did, whatever we did, it worked pretty well. The idea of getting 75 people at the first meeting was great.
Send out to all of our parents.
Did you?
In email.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, we did robocall-type things to the people in the township and everything, so something helped us out there. So, we got a lot of input from those meetings. Now, the last thing I had, and I have talked with Tracy and Chuck on this, I believe Jen was there, we've had two topics, one of them from the joint comprehensive plan, but another one is our signs. So, I got some ideas the other week with a little spin on, we had been contacting the school to help us redo our signs at the north and south borders of our township, and it always had to do with, you know, what could we paint on the picture, on the poster there? That last page gives a little bit different, not a little bit, a lot different spin on this, and what I'm sort of suggesting, and I wanted to get your input, because I'm going to present this to the township supervisors on Monday night if it's acceptable or with any changes that we might have, is to establish a work group, I would call it, of students that would both recommend the size type, location of signs, and what might be on them. They would provide specs and estimated cost for these options, and I even put on here electronic signs. That's not out of our realm, because depending on what costs they come up with, there are grants and other things out there. And also, not to pigeonhole the students on that there's a sign down there and there's a sign up here, and that's like, no, no. Let them brainstorm on where these signs should be. I mean, maybe there should be one in the square, maybe there should be one in front of Giant, maybe, you know what I mean? Let them be open-minded, which is sometimes they have a little bit advantage over us in that area of being open-minded and making these suggestions. So, at the end of it, this could be a long-term thing. This is, I would assume, something that's not going to happen in two weeks, but if you're willing and the students can allocate some time to present options on this, and maybe then present them to the township, the school, and the borough, so that we could move forward with getting our signs replaced. I think it is something we really do need, and I think from comments that are made in the comprehensive plan, they should be informative signs, not just the picture of an eagle saying, "Welcome to Dover," necessarily. Now, if that's what they come up with, that's, you know what I mean? We have to, you know, respect what their ideas are, but with the current day, electronic signs and that, that are out there, if they're done properly, we could use them for information also to exchange with the residents. That's a tough thing, seems like we always have, both parties. So, the second one is recreation. That seems like that's always number one or number two in every conversation with a comprehensive plan, and I am pretty aware of some plots of ground that the township owns in the area. I know we have a 20-acre plot, a 22-acre plot, and then I'm aware of, since I'm in the Sewer Authority, that the Sewer Authority bought land down at the Conawaga. I know it's on the other side of the hill, and people would have to drive three or four miles, but it's like 34, 35 acres down there that we could possibly do some recreation with for all of our residents. And that's one, then, I'm recommending to have a work group of students, and possibly, I would suggest students that are involved in recreation to both lay out the fields, give them some objectives, do the same thing as far as ask for a couple layouts, ask for costs, their suggestions, we want to keep them somewhat portable, you know, just, we want to provide for both walking trails and baseball and soccer, and, you know, and, you know, give them some suggestions, but see what could come out of that. That's another one that might happen over a period of time. So, actually, the students that participate in that could change possibly, because the students rotate out after a while, and, you know, even in two or three years, we may not be done. The way things go, this is one thing they could learn real well, it doesn't happen overnight. And coming up with costs and stuff like that is sometimes a pretty interesting job that the students could learn a lot by it. So, that was an idea I had, and we've talked about it briefly, and if there's a general consensus that says something that we could present to the township, it's possibly something we could work on together.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
I think involving our students in the community is a wonderful direction to head in, absolutely.
I love them, too. Anytime we can give them a real-life experience, too, I think is a perfect opportunity for them to grow, so I think these are great ideas.
Okay. All right. Well, then, I'm going to, I'm sorry, yes.
How much land does the township have over here that's not being used?
In total?
Yeah, the township building.
Well, now, the Eagle Park is pretty much going to
Take care of it.
Take care of that land that's available. There will be two, according to the current design, anyway, there will be two ballfields on there, walking trails, and frisbee golf, I believe it's called, and a couple things like that. Our problem over here is it sort of tails down. It's quite a slope to the property.
A question keeps being asked is, where's the senior center getting their money?
That's their thing. They have to
Are there grants available, or what? I know we were in the process of
You know, if there are, I'm not aware that they've applied for any, but, I mean, they have to raise their own funds to do this. It's, it is a senior center, but it is not sponsored by the residents of the township, because actually, it's the Dover Senior Center, it is not the Dover Township Senior Center, you know what I mean?
So, basically, it's through fundraising or grants?
That's, I would assume that's the majority of it, other than the land that they're getting, I believe, is going to be donated to them.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the awarding of the grant. That sounds, that's pretty amazing. I was just curious, if you're able to move forward because of that, what's the next step? Like, is it going to require additional grants to be provided to keep the project moving forward once, you know, you get the ball rolling on this, or is there a plan in place to, once you start, you're going to continue going?
No, the plan is that we would look for additional funds first before we would take funds from our own coffers. Now, we do have to match some of the funds from the grants, and we are prepared to do that. Laurel is really up to date on, you know, you have to match 10% here, this or that or whatever. But the next step, getting the funds to actually build the park, is one that, yes, we will apply for other grants, and if we can get them, it just makes it go faster and easier.
What is, just out of curiosity, what is the, like, the estimated cost of what the whole project would be? Do you have that, you have that, an idea?
The whole project? No, I don't like throwing numbers out. I think it is in the three to four million range, but that, this million and a half is a good, is a chunk of that already, so it's not, I don't think it's another three or four on top of the million and a half. And I know some of that we are going to do, "we" meaning the township, we will do some of the dirt work and the preparation and all that to help keep costs down also. Okay? Any other questions?
Is there any, is there any update on the corner of Hilton and 74 at all?
Which corner?
The one across from the store that has been standing empty for years.
You mean the Lidl? No, the only update I know is, this did happen. They did come to a meeting, one of our meetings, in December and present another plan, and it was actually a simpler plan, so it was approved, and we, if we ask them once, we'd probably ask them six times, when, when, when. So, the only thing, I don't know what's out there, but I heard that Lidl possibly bit off more than they could chew. So, I don't want to get this out in the press or anything, but I don't know, we're sort of getting the impression that it's not going to happen. So, our kicker is, okay, if it's not going to happen, let's get the land out there and get it resold to something that we can benefit from, but we can't make them sell the land. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Mr. Nelson. He is going to have pictures of mud and rocks and rebar and pipes and all sorts of good stuff for us tonight, I think.
Oh, okay. So, you can go to the next one. This is just our February, I just put those first two slides in. Go ahead. This is about two weeks ago, so I'm going to show you a progression of pictures here. It's just another area where we're at. This is standing right outside the pool door, looking towards the main construction area. You notice there's a foundation right in front of us here, that is the front of the building. So, we cover it up when we're expecting inclement weather so that we don't get water in the block, and days like yesterday, we can work today. Go ahead. Just another shot from that same area, our foundations that are going in. You notice that in the back left of that picture was the first picture, I said, I'll show you a progression. This was about a week ago, so they have now up to second floor level, okay? Same thing there, just a different angle, I'm showing you the progress. We're at second floor level here, this is the classroom area as we're working towards the front of the building. This is in the front of the building, this was where I showed you the picture a while ago, where there wasn't anything, we had a bunch of pipes sticking up in the air. This is where we were at on Monday of this week, before it snowed. This is looking down the hallway and back of the CTE area. We started flying steel in on Friday of last week, so we started setting steel. Classrooms now, most of the classrooms in the back wing and up along the side all have steel in like this. This is what it kind of looks like from the top. They're up welding it all together, and then that corrugated steel decking will go on. So, this is one of the corridors, they kind of group everything together, and then they'll scatter it out once they get it up there, but this is a corridor looking towards Intermediate Avenue. I'm in the back of the building looking front. This is back of the building looking towards the multipurpose field. In the CTE lab, we're finishing up some of the interior walls here, going up. Again, you can tell this is before it snowed this week. This is a front wall looking out towards Intermediate Ave. This was this morning. So, this is kind of, you can see how far our walls are up and how much of the building we have done. Just another angle, we're actually looking at it from the opposite direction, and you can, now you can see the steel decking, or the steel truss work in there that's been put up. So, these were all taken this morning. And this is a short video. If you put your cursor up in the middle, it might bring you up an arrow, well, maybe not. It's actually a flyover. Kind of gives you a good perspective of what's going on. Won't do it. There you go. Now, he's not going real fast, it's only a minute and a half video, so it's not real long, but you can see, if you look closely, you'll notice people moving around. This is probably about seven o'clock this morning, maybe a little before, a little after, but around seven, before it got real foggy. This is this classroom wing in the back. The rooms to your far left are science classrooms, and you can just see the foundation wall in the upper left-hand corner of the back of the auditorium there, just about ready to go out of screen there. This is the front section, these are classrooms. The room to the right, bottom right there, you see, is the family consumer science room, and in the upper center, which you can just barely see that wall sticking up, that is the farthest wall towards the school from the alternative ed. And then, he's panning out, so this is looking at it from another direction. So, today, they worked on brickwork on that blue area there where you see, as well as concrete blockwork on the area where you see the little cursor sticking up there. I think that's it.
Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, this is our first public comment period, this is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda, so if you have anything that you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, Board's President's Communication, I have nothing to add tonight, so we'll move into the Capital Project Steering Committee. You pretty much just got the report that we had in committee. Mr. Nelson did discuss three possible change orders that we have coming up. Two are deducts, and one is adds, so we're still to the good on change orders if they go through in the end as planned, so we're in a good shape there. So, we will move on to facilities and safe and supportive schools with Mr. Emig and Mr. Rauchser.
Tonight, we actually combined two committees. We had the safe and supportive schools plus the human and fiscal resources, and that meeting was brought to us to inform us about the RFP for transportation plus staffing needs, and Mrs. Benko presented that along with Mr. Cook and Mr. Rauchser. I'll just touch on some things, and if need be, Mr. Cook can jump in or Mr. Rauchser. But as far as the transportation proposal, they had put bids out, and they had come up with actually two companies that had put in bids. They went back to other ones that they had put out, and for various reasons, they turned down to put in a bid for the transportation. The two companies that they had, that we're looking at is EMB, which will give us full need, full buses for transportation, for sports and everything else, and FNS for vans and special needs. Going over the proposal, EMB for four years, we could save $560,000, and FNS would cost us roughly $50,000. Some questions that I had checked into was, they said about GPS on the buses. Me being a bus driver for Central York, our buses have what we call Zonar. Zonar is an instrument that is the same as GPS, it tells you exactly where the buses are, it tells you if you're stopping at a stop sign, if you're turning right on red or whatever. So, Mr. Cook, anything else you want to add as far as the transportation, the RFP for transportation?
I think you pretty much hit it all. The only thing I would mention is let's let everybody know that through this process, the savings with our current supplier, it's actually within the four-year contract, it's going to take till the fourth year to get, actually get back to where we are currently paying right now. So, the process is really one that, you know, the due diligence was good to put it out there, even though we didn't get a lot of response out there, so it's still a good process to get us back there.
Okay. Mr. Rauchser, anything under transportation you want to add?
I think I covered it.
Okay. The second item that Mrs. Benko talked about was staffing needs, filling positions that we currently need for short term. We have openings in for custodians, special ed, food service, maintenance, groundkeepers, and PCAs, and it's a possibility they're going to go to third-party or a temp agency to try and help fill this, and Mrs. Benko had informed us that Dover's not the only one that's having staffing problems. All the schools throughout York County are having these problems. Mr. Cook, anything you want to add to the staffing needs?
Got it.
Mr. Rauchser, anything? Okay. Okay. And the other thing that we had talked about was the Emergency Operations Plan. If anybody is interested in a hard copy, which Mr. Perkins said, we, it's hundreds of pages, he could get you a hard copy of that. Plus, they've added 24-hour surveillance signs are now posted at each building. There are more than one posted at, at the high school as well. So if you see any of them, you'll know that we are under 24-hour surveillance. Anything else, Mr. Cook or Mr. Rollhauser?
The only thing I wrote down was that that plan needs to be approved on an annual basis, so this isn't, this isn't a brand-new thing. So it's something we have to constantly, constantly be looking at and updating.
Okay, Mr. Eifert, that's all that I have, and Mr. Cook and Mr. Rollhauser has, unless Mrs. Banko has anything she wants to add.
No, thank you. We will be probably bringing you, if we get the information from EMB in regards to the GPS system, Zonar, we may be bringing you a contract next month to approve for the transportation services.
Good. Just a question related to the staffing levels. Does the issue seem to stem from compensation levels, or is it just the low unemployment rate, and there's not a lot of people out there available for the jobs, or?
I think all of, so the, the compensation rate, I don't, I don't know that is a factor between all of our schools. We're, we're pretty comparably priced with all the schools, but, I mean, it's, it's just hard to get people here. We, we talked about a little bit in committee how, you know, they'll, they'll apply, we'll set up an interview, they don't show up for an interview, or we offer them a position, they never show up. Through the clearance process, they may have found other work. So it's, it's just a variety of issues that we're, we're dealing with. Once they get here, sometimes they don't really understand what the job really entails, especially with PCAs, or, you know, even custodians, a lot of them have other full-time positions that, coming here after working a full-time job and having to, you know, do some of the, the hard labor that the custodians do, cleaning and things, it's, it's too much. So, it's, it's just a hard balance and finding the right people to come and stay.
Any other questions?
The other thing I was gonna mention, too, was that, you know, in this process of hiring them, they still have to go through the clearance process, so the immediate filling of a position is not always attainable. It takes, you know, minimum two to three weeks to get through the clearance process. So, sometimes within that framework, they've found another job, or, you know, whatever, that, you know, maybe this, put all that effort into it, and they never really come and fill the position. So, this adds to the dilemma.
Anybody else? Okay, Comprehensive Plan, Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Maile.
Alrighty. We had an aggressive agenda today, had, had a lot of stuff that we went over. So we started out the, the evening, by the way, thank you for the food, it was really good, so hit the spot. Mrs. Kream updated us on the current discussions on the elementary realignment. She wanted to emphasize, and I'm gonna reemphasize here in public, that no decisions have been made on this. As a matter of fact, discussions are just beginning, in the beginning stages of this. Again, went over some of the building projects in the township that could impact our, our decisions. And discussed basically any plan that was approved by the township, some that are moving forward, some that are sitting on the back burner, nothing been done with them for, you know, many years. But again, all those things are, we need to be taking into consideration. After she was done, then Dr. Maloney led us into a, a PSSA discussion. And we started out with a, a third-grade passage that was taken from a, a released
Released item.
Released item from, from the, the state concerning the, an ELI question and reading that the students had to, to, to read and then answer questions on. And she wanted us to look at, you know, what would a, a third-grade student need to know to be, in order to be able to, to complete this question? So it was kind of interesting to go back and try and look at this through the, the eyes of a third-grader. And then we went from there on some math problems, a fifth, a seventh, and an eighth-grade math problem. And I will tell you, at the eighth-grade math problem, I was sitting there crying. The, the, the material that they're, that they're learning now in eighth grade, I think I learned in 11th grade, maybe, or maybe even college, just some of the stuff. So, so it just shows how far down we're pushing this information. And again, I think you just got everybody, at least for me, I can't speak for everybody else, but for me, it, again, like I said, just realized the, the volume of information they're getting, as early as they're getting it. And then Ms. Smith, who is a reading specialist at North Salem, just went over an overview of the Title I program that the district has and different tiers, and how we're implementing that program to meet the needs of our students in there. And we currently, 44%, Title I pro, Title I funds are allocated based upon the number of, of students that we have that are in the Free and Reduced Lunch program. Currently, 44% of our, our student population qualifies for Free and Reduced Lunch. So that's how our money is allocated. And currently, we have approximately 389 students in the Title I program. And that, again, that, that number fluctuates as the students move in and move out of the Title I services.
Is that just in the elementary schools, though, I think?
That's for the district-wide, but our el, our elementary schools are higher, because students tend to report less as they get older.
So again, like I said, she just wondered what the services they provide and how they implement the, the Title I program and services. When she was finished, then Mrs. Guyer spoke a little bit about our special education plan that we need to write every three years, and which is again up for approval to the state again, I guess by September.
It has to be uploaded to the state by May, so I'll be coming next month to.
So again, talk about that, about the plan, and also about the, the special education, special education services that we provide our students. And then also, just briefly about the gifted, you know, programs that we have for our students, and some of the challenges, I guess you would call it, of, of meeting those students' needs as well. After that, Mrs. Johnson went into and talked about the social and emotional services that our, our district has implemented. And this is a new program that we have for our students with, with Mrs. Johnson being here. And, you know, so again, so now we're, we're not just looking at the academic and behavioral parts of our students, but also their, that social and emotional needs with them. Let's see. After that, we, we were divided into four groups, and we had an activity where we were asked to list the accomplishments and the concerns of the district, accomplishments that we feel the districts have made, and then some concerns that we have about where we need to go. And I will say that throughout the groups, it was pretty consistent with both the accomplishments and the, and the concerns. And I think, you know, as, as a board, you know, we, we pretty much are aware of most of those concerns. Again, even though we're, we're making progress on the curriculum, you know, we're still often concerned with, with having a, a standards-aligned curriculum. Some climate issues still within the, the district. Some of the accomplishments, they feel also with concerns of the, of the, yeah, I just lost my train of thought. With the curriculum, we do feel that, you know, they do feel, and everybody feels that, we are, are making strides in getting that accomplished. And, let me see, and then, next, we kind of delved into, and we took those, those accomplishments, concerns, and then we looked at the questions that the Comprehensive Plan asks if, if we have these, these programs in place. And we found that we did have some deficiencies that we needed to work on. So we came up with, well, I guess Dr. Maloney came up with three goals for our district. And as a matter of fact, they are the same three goals that are in our current Comprehensive Plan. So we discussed those, just real, real briefly. And then finally, we, we talked about our induction program that our, our teachers partake in, and these are our new teachers who come into the district. The state requires you to have a one-year induction program. We've actually had a two-year program for our students. And according to Dr. Maloney, it's a very intense program. And, and from my understanding, from what she was saying, it, it seems like it does, is preparing our, our teachers. And then finally, just real briefly, we went over the professional development plan for the district, and then we kind of ran out of time. And I think she probably wanted to delve a little bit more into that, but the time restraints kept us from doing that. I think that's it. Is that pretty much it?
That's what I got.
Okay. This is two hours, it was, like I said, it was, it was an aggressive, it was an aggressive, uh, uh, meeting, a lot went over. Our next meeting again is, is March 21st, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, I know you, nothing is set in stone, but do we have options for the elementary schools at all?
Options for?
As far as?
The realignment?
Realignment?
Part of what I shared was that if we, if we choose to stay with K to five, we are going to have to realign the buildings. So, that, that's a definite, and I, and I wanted that people to hear that. Because one of the reasons the parents don't want us to look at a K2, 3, 5 model, or a K1, 2, 3, 4, 5 model, is because they want to stay in their current building. So, I think one of the things, the things that we have to be very clear about is, they might not anyway, no matter what. So, when we make our decision, when you just, you know, as a board, we have to make what's in the best decid, what's in the best interest of our kids. And I think we have to look at what's fiscally in the best interest of the district. So, yeah, so yet, we are going to have to do something. And with all of this building in the township, when is the right time to do it? When is too soon? When another housing development might be on the brink of starting again. So I think that we have to look at all that and take all that into account, and not go too soon when you have to realign again in a couple of years.
So if, if the township is expanding by adding different areas of growth, are we looking at that as well when we do the realignment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, yes. We're gonna talk very much in depth about that in March at our retreat. And I'm gonna show you all the maps we have. Jen Banko and I spent some time with Laurel, she shared with us every single building project that has, has been approved, those that are building, those that probably won't build, she gave us all that information, so we'll share all that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Next is our miscellaneous period for any other comments or observations from our board members. I just had one thing to add myself, and that is Tracy just mentioned about March 12th, we are having a board planning retreat, where we'll hear some of that kind of information, look at some of the data in the district, things like that, so I'm looking forward to that, and we'll use that to plan going forward. Anybody else? Okay, our last public comment period for items on or off the agenda, I won't say the whole spiel, if anybody wants to get up, go ahead. Okay, we'll move on to future meeting announcements. Our next meetings are Tuesday, March 19th, that is the Board Action Meeting. And then Thursday, March 21st, we will have our Board Committee Meetings at 6:00, and our Board Planning Meeting at 7:00. So if there is nothing else to discuss, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Give a second, all in favor, yes? We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, still beat you.